This meeting is held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and the Asbury Park Press. All notices are filed with the Board Secretary. Irina, please call us to order.
Today is Tuesday, November 12, 2019. Christopher Abellone.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Daniel Harris.
Here.
Eric Gallagher.
Here.
Brittany Ashman.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Wood.
Here. All right, just some housekeeping issues. First, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 22, 2019.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. And if anyone's here for the Park Avenue application, which was withdrawn, or the Cookman application, which would be carried, they will not be heard tonight. I will make a motion to carry 900 Cookman Avenue to January 28, 2019 with notice.
I'll second.
We have already adjourned our appointments.
I appreciate that, Mr. Carras, and I hear you're ready to go. Okay, great.
All in favor?
Aye. And we, I guess, will do the resolutions now?
Gallagher, we should put in the record the letter requesting to withdraw the application.
Oh, that way, Mr. Carras has just made a very valid point. Hold on, Jack. We carried it 2019, it should be carried to 2020.
Oh, yeah.
Even though I'm looking at 2019.
Well, at the next meeting, we're inventing a time machine.
January 28, 2020.
Yes.
And the letter from Kevin Kennedy withdrawing application for 103 Park Avenue. The mark as... AA1.
And that's without purchase.
And I guess we'll do the resolutions since there's, we can still give Christopher Gonzalez a little more time. I'll make a motion to approve the 1,000 Grand Avenue Valerio Properties resolution.
We have a bunch of, we had, we got some recommendations from Donna's office this afternoon.
Oh, really?
And Irina and I went over and put in, and I believe she has copies. Yeah, the changes, and her support helped, Donna gave me on it, are in red.
They're fairly minor, is that correct, Jack?
They're more explanatory than anything.
I don't see them as being anything to change, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of Valerio Properties.
I'll second. No.
I'll second.
All right, and Eric Gallagher.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
And Russell Lewis.
Yes.
Tim Wood.
Yes.
And Christopher.
Yes. And I'll make a motion to approve the 1307 Fourth Avenue application, Catherine Lewis, resolution rather.
I'll second.
And Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Eric Gallagher.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
Yes.
Russell Lewis.
Yes.
And Christopher.
Yes. All right, so we'll just move right into the application, 306th Avenue. Mr. Carras, welcome back.
Thank you. Good to be here, if I may, Mr. Carras, with the firm of Dr. Charles on behalf of applicant, 306th LLC. We are here tonight, we have revised plans that we want to present. We have our architect, Mr. Gallagher, testify tonight, so...
Can you just bring this up to speed again, Mr. Carras? Just letting the board know what the application was, where it was, and all the particulars that have been...
You got it. It's a property at 306th Avenue, Lot 3606, Lot 5, it's a zone of R2. The lot size, we're talking about 3,500 square feet. We're proposing the building around 33 plus or minus 100 square feet. It's going to be 36,000 square feet here. Number of areas in that area, we still have, and we propose two-family residential. Well, it is a permitted use, but there are certain bulk requirements that are required in addition, like various in FAA. We took the board's comments last time to heart, we need certain revisions based upon those comments. We'll address those tonight in terms of certain elevations, certain revisions to the plans of the park and whatnot. We did get a report from the planner, we'll be addressing those comments tonight. As I indicated, I have Mr. Savarese back, he's the architect on the project, testified previously before his board on this matter. He'll go through all, excuse me, all the revisions that he has made. We do not have a planner here tonight, we will present the planner at the appropriate tone with regard to the D-variants relief that is being with us and also the bulk sheet.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carras.
That being said, Mr. Savarese.
Are you able to bring that up, Irina, on the...
Yes, would you?
I think it would be helpful, yes.
Wait, if we can get it on screen, you'll be able to see it on the screen.
Do you swear upon testimony, give that these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record and tell your last name.
I'm Michael Savardese.
Thank you.
We also swear to it, Mr. Savarese, why don't we swear and have my folks to the right here?
Do you swear upon testimony, give that these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and your affiliation with the city.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Jason Fisher, board engineer.
Thank you.
Mr. Savarese.
We are here for the West End, we're here, the board has comments about the site, about heights, about elevations, about how we fit a building on the site. One of the main concerns was for...
You're going to make reference to the plan's revised capital plan here, right? Correct?
That's correct.
And that has your revision date last at 7/25/2019, am I correct?
That's right.
I'm not sure what the last exhibit was.
I think we ended on May 28 on 8th grade, so this would be 8/4.
8/4 then. Okay, 8/4 for identification.
Almost there, Irina.
Take a look at what's marked as 8/4 for identification. Those are the revised plans that you've carried on the site, did you hear my crack? Why don't we go through the various pages of the plans, you have three revisions.
Okay, the first plan is the, basically the site plan, and the revisions are slight modifications to the entry, slight modifications to the building size as to the rear of the lot. What's highlighted tonight has to do with part of a cost report. One of the things I want to note that we do agree that the FAR is actually 0.95, not 1.05, the disqualification, that's what it is. We do agree that our units are, the day is 1,499 square feet, unit D is 1,899 square feet. One of the things that I want to note is when, in the report, they refer to the mean height of the ground of the building, the ground of the road.
And why is that relevant?
That's relevant because that's how you calculate height from, so it's like how can height calculate grade from? So one of the issues we brought up is that lower level of one of our building units is below grade. It's below grade, but it's actually, when you're actually tanning it to the level 0.6, that's Sixth Avenue, it's below that rate, but adjacent to where it is on the footprint, it's actually above the 9.4, the 5.05, the 10.5. So it's not, it's not below grade.
So the closest street to where that unit is actually located, it is above grade, is correct?
That is correct.
Go on.
The second thing I want to bring up in the document, the site plan, is we brought up the fact that eventually this site might be leveled to be at the 10. As of today, it is actually not, still a flood zone, has still preliminary planning to be entitled, as far as I know.
That's not how it works. Certified floodway manager, certified floodway manager.
Okay. I got this, and that's what I'm telling you about, that's why I read it from.
I understand.
And we will gladly go up to 11th, we want it above 5, but that brings us another six inches above. At the last meeting, we said we'd be above the BFE, and to be just did, we went 10.5. I'd like to introduce that.
So this particular property is in a flood zone, Donna, or not in a flood zone?
It is. There's, so if you go to FEMA's website, and they have all the maps, you know, digitally available, and their landing page, you type in your address, it'll show you right, your property in the aerial, and all the various zones on it. That's based on what's called the effective map. And the effective map is what was adopted in Asbury Park in 2009.
Oh, right, yeah.
So after Sandy...
But that was prior to 2012, though, right?
Right, so after Sandy, there was a great deal of complaining, and so FEMA is currently being challenged by the City of New York, essentially, about the revised flood elevations. And if you recall, after Sandy, when people were trying to rebuild, there was a lot of confusion as to what height should new construction be built to. And so FEMA came out with advisory flood elevations, and then ultimately these preliminary elevations. And so in parts of the northern, northern part of Monmouth County, Highlands, the Bay Shore, their preliminary map was adopted and is now the effective map. Unfortunately, the piles that cover Asbury Park and a lot of the rest of Monmouth County and Ocean County are still in this preliminary stage. But the regulations say, the flood hazard regulations, FEMA's regs, say you use the most restrictive...
Conservative.
So if, you know, the effective map has a lower elevation and the preliminary map has a higher elevation, you're obligated to build to the higher elevation. In towns where it's the reverse, it is the reverse. There were parts of Highlands that actually flood elevations were reduced after Sandy, just because it was a recalculation, they, you know, determined based on changes in topography from, you know, the built, built areas, you know, the maps were originally from really old aerials and old survey data, so they didn't always have the best elevation data. So there was a lot that went into these corrected maps. So right now, yes, we're still governed by this preliminary map, and in this area, the line comes almost right through the middle of the lot. So the guy to the west is outside the flood zone, the guy, I think, to the south is also outside the flood zone, it's a very unfortunate curve to that line, but all of Webb and Sixth and, you know, east on Sixth is in that zone A-E with an elevation 10.
Okay, and so that means...
So you have to build to like 11 feet above? One foot above the base of the elevation. So they need to be finished four of 11.
I understand.
To get a building permit.
I don't know if that's correct, I don't know if it's incorrect in terms of whether or not it's been adopted or not adopted, it's something that we have to look into. Our understanding was that you go by the effective map, not the preliminary.
No, there's effective maps, there's preliminary...
I don't want to argue this point.
It's clear, it's clear. The effective, the preliminary, DEP says use the higher. FEMA uses the effective, period. DEP says use the higher of the two.
So based on that, Mr. Carras, I'm going with what our board engineer says.
If your engineer is saying it's the highest, we need to raise, first of all, by six inches, which is, we are working, but that just makes the height...
Right, so you have even more of a variance task for height.
But we're being forced into that.
Nobody's forcing you into that, that's what it is, Mr. Savarese.
It's as a result...
But we're not forcing you into that.
Well, Catherine, FEMA, it's what's...
There's a different option.
Continue. One of the concerns at the last meeting was the style of building, the signage of grass, and the...
Before we get to that, I started a quick page for myself. We talked about you made some revisions to the management system, why don't we go through all the revisions? Go to the next page.
Okay. Extensively, the floor plans remain the same, but the amount of glass, the light, and elements and decoration has changed. We need to perform with our understanding of the design plan. This is the web tree elevation, where the tower between the two units is a unit on one side, a unit on the other side. The entry tower is vertically accentuated, possibly a bit accentuated, more into the archdeco style, which is clearly related in your master plan. The front elevator of Sixth Avenue, we introduced glass garage doors, a little solid glass doors to give more open glass feeling, and that means the center of glass now fully meets the criteria of the zone, the special district area. So I think the building has been approved, that has a clear archdeco style to it, and one of the comments from the cooperative board, with the fact that the balconies seem bigger than they'd like them to be, but to our, our way of thinking of why the balconies of the size they are, is you want to give outdoor living space to the units, to, because they're at higher elevations, you know, for the views of the city, which they wouldn't be able to have. And also, as far as the corner is concerned, it brings the back of the building back, so the corner is more of a two-and-a-half, three-story building versus a three-story higher building. So it doesn't have a high height at the corner of the main building. So at the corners, where our 28 feet above the ground, at the top, we're at 36 feet. It's the higher, the lower corner, you are more open beyond, but also gives us as a unit a more outside area to recoup and see and enjoy the views and the wind of the city.
Any other revisions, plans?
That's basically it, we've gone through the report, we don't, we don't have too many comments that we don't...
There are a few things I do want to, in the, there's a patio on the property, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, we just have patio over there.
That's off the back of the...
Why don't you bring that out?
There's a concrete day retired to the south of the canyon.
And can you give me the dimensions of the patio, and how far does the rear property line?
Patio is feet by feet. The rear property line, it's undulated, it's about 16 feet, that's going to be rear property line.
And where is the building itself in the municipal rear property?
25.
Just the reason I bring that up, there's a comment in the planner's report that indicates that a variance will be needed for the rear yard setback, but when you look at Section 368, there's 4D of the municipal code, patio, as long as it's five feet from the rear property line, can be within that rear yard setback, it does not require a variance, and you measure from the rear property line to the wall, but that patio has to be at least five feet from the rear property line, and that's on the approach to engineering, rear yard setback. There's also a retaining wall on the property, am I correct?
Yes, there are two retaining walls, in order to get required parking for the site, you go down two feet to get into our garage, and when you do that, you hold the yard back with two retaining walls. We stated in our report that it's tightly controlled to open the doors, these are people who are taking, are owning, are high-end rentals, probably have nicer cars, sure they be careful not to open the car, open it not to hit the retaining wall. It's a condition that can be done at 92 feet, I've seen it done. If the board is implying that we don't like the type that's 92 feet, we can always put a splay on the walls, make the retaining walls splay out to the lower, but we need to get the cars in at a lower level so the height works, you know, all the height issues.
And with regards to that retaining wall, there's a comment within the report that the retaining wall extends into the rear yard, probably 19 feet, leaving a six-foot front yard setback. For its education, the way it's defined yard within the municipal code, so setbacks are defined to a wall of a building or a structure, so retaining wall, my understanding, reading the definition of yard, does not ordinarily include a retaining wall. So the, what is the front yard setback?
The front yard setback is 21 feet to the balcony, 25 feet to the house.
Excuse me, can you just clarify, are those retaining walls attached to the house? Or are they...
Yes, they are, they don't have to be, they are. I don't understand the reason for the question.
Well, if they're part of the building, they're part of the structure.
No, they're not a part of the building.
But the way the code reads is that setbacks are defined to a wall of the building, I think when they say wall, I'm understanding is actual structural wall, it's open.
I could actually put a six-inch reveal between the building and the retaining wall, it's always, it's always separate structure, there's nothing to do with one, nothing to do with the other.
We've had an opportunity to review the planner's report, am I correct? What I want to do, I just want to mark this report, I want to go through some of the comments as A5 for identification. And we agree, when you look on page two, it gives the living area, both Unit A and on page three, Unit E, Unit A is 1,600 meters square feet, Unit B is 1,702 square feet.
My unit calculations are 1,400 meters square feet and 1,899 square feet.
So your calculation, as we find in the technical...
Right.
Trust that you set that, on page five, the planner's report is correct, is the correct FAR, that's the public calculation, is 0.95, right?
That is correct.
And there's a comment...
I'd like to go back up to density, probably. And while density is all well to say we're at a higher density than normal, but you gotta realize, this site is a single-family site, it's a loop, it's a 12th of an acre, and density doesn't imply, it's not like we're putting, we have an acre, we're putting 25 units there, it's just have a 12th of an acre, and it's not viable for this order, put a single-family house, it just doesn't make sense.
Now, wait a minute, you're talking apples and peaches. If you're talking from an architect's point of view, that's fine, but if you're talking density in a zoning context, you're not a planner.
I'm not talking about...
Architectural.
I'm just talking from...
No, we, no, we're, we're... Why architecturally would a one-family house work on this particular site?
No.
Why?
Because it's not a point...
It's stereo guys.
I know what's around, this surrounding neighborhood, and there are multiple family houses, not many one-family houses.
But there's also not many lots of 1,700 square feet.
3,500.
3,500, sorry, 3,500 square...
There's lots, you go all around, the same multiple all built.
But, but this is a very small lot for the area, and that doesn't argue for more units, it argues for less units. Not, and I'm not saying that two, two families is an excessive amount, but the argument doesn't hold up.
Well, not necessarily, because architecturally, when you look at all the multi-family units in the area, to stick one family, and we'll get into it...
However, in the design of this multi-family unit, Mr. Savarese, you have two separate entrances for the two different units, is that correct?
That's right.
Now, would you agree that having separate entrances adds redundant floor area to both units?
Say that again.
Could you have a common entrance for two units?
I think what makes these units unique is the fact that they are separate from each other, they don't share a common home.
However, one of the issues that you're coming up against is a height problem. If there were less floor area, perhaps the height issue would be less severe. And somehow, sharing some of those things on a very undersized lot might be a strategy to get there. I'm a little overwhelmed by the size of it as well, Mr. Savarese, I, I, I think it could be scaled somewhat smaller.
And your suggestion being to...
I'm just saying that one opportunity for efficiency on the site is to look at how the circulation of the building is working. I am not suggesting that that is the only, that size is the only issue, there's a configurational issue that's been addressed in Donna's plan about the location of the parking coming out on Sixth Avenue so close to the corner. That's a real issue, and...
But you're going to have that no matter...
You're going to have a different type of problem on the side street, but...
But it's an advantage of the lot.
Correct.
And if you have a single-family home, you still would have double-wide driveway, you get in, you're likely to get into your lot, so you still would have parking, the same problem as where it is now.
I'm not arguing for a single-family versus a two-family, I'm not, I'm just saying that there's an opportunity here to look at this configuration of the units and figure out what is redundant that doesn't need to be on a lot that is so small. It would help you with the size issue as well, Mr. Savarese.
I mean, I get that, I don't know where to put the second set of cars without getting rid of space, but, I mean, I guess we can look at that, but I just, I think, I personally think the design is done, fits this lot very well, and it's there.
If that were true, you wouldn't be here.
Either way you're coming here, whether it's a one-family or a two-family, you're coming...
Correct, correct.
Because the size of the lot...
Correct, but the size of the lot...
You may not need an FAR variance, you may need a bulk variance, but you don't necessarily need an FAR variance from this board.
That we don't have.
Or not necessarily a height variance either. And the size of the units are, would you repeat for us the size of the two units?
1,419 and 1,899.
So one is significantly larger than the other, 400 square feet, right?
Yep. One has the use of a penthouse, one has the use of a garden block.
No, no, I understand. However, one of those apartments that's much larger has also the same set of stairs that the first unit has. And that's just one opportunity for getting into such a small box. It is a small box, and tiny homes are in. You could find like nine Brooklyn hipsters.
If you want to compare Brooklyn, that's a whole different story. All right, let me just finish going through the report. I certainly understand your comments about redundancy, about incorporating more of the different items in the house to make it more efficient. But let's continue the report. I talks about landscape, and it says the application provides the required for it, or landscape revised plans provide formal notes and details rather than exception. No objection to that, am I correct?
We put some landscape in, obviously football.
The next comment on the same page, 3.1, talks about the minimum distance between the two buildings, that's a complete gasification through survey documentation, the design exception may be a part of the design exception, we include that within the survey.
I'm sorry, Mr. Carras, what, which of our reports do you have, what's the date?
November 7, 2019.
Oh, okay.
Am I on the right one?
Yeah.
That's on page five on the sixth. Three point two was the below-grade dwelling, we've already addressed that, am I correct?
Correct.
The design standards, three point three and three point three A, talking about the art deco stream line, we've already addressed those comments, yes, correct. We continue on to the frontages on page eight. Says the web street frontage appears to minimally satisfy the base project required by providing stoop, however continues to present a sterile street level apartment, we address that.
So what we have designed, because of the width of the build, is what we're trying to achieve with two glass garage doors at the first level, and the original opportunity at this level to have a stoop.
Terms of the second comment, multiple balconies on the building, you already addressed that through your comments, correct?
Yes, correct.
If the parking weren't on that side, can we go back to your stoop issue? So can you just go a little bit more into why a stoop doesn't work? Or why some, the. So you're claiming the address is three hundred, what, is it three hundred Sixth Avenue, one hundred Sixth Avenue? Whatever, it doesn't matter. But you're claiming the address is on Sixth Avenue. But your Sixth Avenue frontage isn't your front, and it doesn't, it kind of. The two garage, the two garages where your future residents are going to park and share, correct?
One side, oh, surely, yes, and share. One side, one, one side, yeah.
Yeah, they'll know each other anyway. They don't have passing in the hallway, too. So they're going to park two cars in there. And then they're more than likely going to park two cars in what is essentially your front yard.
Well, if it's for a hipster from Brooklyn, they'll probably have one.
They'll probably just have one of those little scooters, yeah, you know, or like.
The scooter.
A one-wheel, one of those things.
You can get ten scooters.
Great. However, I don't know how many Brooks in Brooklyn. These are high-end apartments, right?
All of them, they are.
Yeah, great. So the, I think the, the comment in the planner's report and the spirit of the ordinance is saying that the ground level situation should feel more open and welcoming, which argues for the parking to be somewhere else beyond the other aspects of the, of the, hold on, beyond the other aspects that, that have been brought up about the parking. You're going to end up with four cars in this place. Let's just say this is a person who lives here year-round, and we hope they are, we hope they are. They're going to have two cars per unit. You're trying to park four cars in, and two of them are going to be in the front yard.
Okay, from a planning point of view, the plan that's suggesting bringing the cars to the rear yard lot, would you introduce more coverage because I have to put the, either in a graveyard or the patio. I can put two cars uncovered in the lot on the ground, and I can put two cars in the front lot uncovered, increasing my coverage.
No, no, that's not.
I don't think that's what we're suggesting.
I can't, I can't make a garbage come in from the back like this.
No, no, we understand. So let me just clarify one thing. So this style of architecture is kind of austere.
No, I understand.
It's not what, you know, the ordinance really thinks about it, you know. It's written more for the wide front porches, Victorian style.
This is certainly in the art deco, modern style.
So it is going to be a little more unfriendly looking at ground level.
Maybe.
But, right, no, but there are opportunities.
Miami looks great on the ground floor.
Whether it's adding more windows on the ground levels that show the interior of the building. Unfortunately, on the web street side, really all you get is garage space, which is not very friendly to see.
No, you get.
But there's the potential for, if the entry were more formalized and it was used for both units, that might give more appealing welcoming on that facade as opposed to just this one doorway sort of secretive, you know, on that whole facade.
But it, but it, the corner, the corner site, like if this was, if this was an interior lot.
Looking like, yeah, the back of the building.
I don't think we should be recommending how they.
No, I'm not, but I'm just saying that it makes.
Illustrating the problem with the facade as it's designed right now. Compared to what the ordinance hopes for.
Understood.
Well, it, it is a corner site because of the narrowness of the property. The part, you're going to see the parking no matter where it is. You can't put it in the back, it's just the nature of the lot. So you move this and this property, being in a corner lot, it's a narrow.
What I'm saying is the, the nature of the site as a corner lot argues for the treatment of that corner as important.
Right, but you have to take into account the reality of the situation, that your lot is only. So you can't come in from Sixth Ave and drive all the way to the back.
That's not.
And you can't come in from Web Street because you're basically going to be stopped. And then you pull a car onto the site. So you're limited where you can put the parking, no matter what the situation is. It's just the reality of the situation. It's whether or not where you do put the parking, you make it aesthetically pleasing. And by doing the garage doors, doing the art deco style, which is very unique, beautiful building, and doing the garage doors the way they're done, it creates a nice visual.
It's minimizing.
But what I, but, but we're come back again then to the constraints you are putting on yourself are the result of the buildings of both the size of the lot and the size of the building. It's a.
They're constrained by the size along the configuration of the lot. You're expected of the size of the building, because you can only go in one or two ways on Sixth Ave, which you can't do all the way to the back of the building. So the apartment is going to have to be in the front.
But there is.
A few ways, let me finish. As far as you do it on Web Street, you pull into a car onto the site, it's going to be sticking out into the street. Or it's going to be right under the building.
Yeah, you, you could, if you eliminated the rear patio and flipped the ground floor, you would have the garage, again, you would be able to have four spaces. But you would be able to pull two cars in underneath the building on the back side. Yeah, the entire backyard would be paved, be very similar to one thousand grand, where the whole thing is just paved in the back, but you'd get two cars under the building, and then you would have a proper building facade, you know, proper in quotes, along Sixth Ave.
So, and I guess it's.
But yeah, there would be.
Are you better off having parking in the front or just paving the entire lot so you can accommodate parking that's in the back?
But that's for the board to evaluate as opposed to being told this is the only way.
This is the only way to solve the problem. And I do think that the problem is the function of both the size. I do think the problem is a function of both the size of the lot and the size you have chosen to make the building. That's, that's my only point.
What I think we've done, what we've attempted, is create two good-looking facades in the building. Like the Web Street, there by itself, the tower, if that would be done in that period for an apartment-type building that was this style, I think I had the front door. Whether or not I could figure out a way, maybe common lobby on the first floor, so both people entered our front door and no one entered the back door. I really don't think that matters, because when you live in a apartment, you know the back door is, or the front door is yours. As far as moving the parking in the back.
Did you try to design it that way, though, Mr. Severese? Before you say you can't, did you ever try to do that?
We, we, we did, and we liked, we came up with better, because we liked the fact that we had two tucked into the walls apartments. That's what we liked about it. As a selling feature, as a living feature, the whole feature, people lived there, we thought that made more sense. If we can still look at that. But I, I don't know how you want me to get four cars here without increasing the coverage. I don't know what would be the other two. I can clearly put the two cars back here, which now give me open greenery space. I'll give you a copy pad, over to you here, they'll take two of those, and I can put those to someplace. Not going underneath the building, they're going back here. Now I can just add in four hundred square feet of coverage to this lot. I don't think we should do it. So then I do that, two here and two in the garage, and two in the garage, two, not in the garage. I flip the building, I can do that, I can look at that. But I thought this was a more pleasing aesthetic, going with the building with the glass door, I think is the goodest.
I still have a problem with the size, I'm sorry.
No, we, we hear, we hear, and I certainly hear the comments in terms of duplicity of certain elements on the building. We're not going to finish tonight, and we're going to go back and take obviously these comments and just arrange. All right, let me finish getting through the report. Continuing on the page nine fifteen, the record hazard restrictions we've already discussed.
We've discussed a little bit of that.
Forty-two, the parking comment exemption from thirty to fifty-nine, point twelve, point one. Require nineteen-foot parking space where eighteen are proposed, plus an exception on that. The glaring of the driveway with regard to the next comment, you will take it into consideration. So it's not the bank doors, any wall, lighting, no problem. You still like, I don't know if it's name is property. There's a comment regarding street trees. Ask that to plan for your vice, and the street tree lives in the right of way, not an issue if you're better that. Street numbering, we're not there, no profit street number.
Basically a place owner.
I wasn't worried about the street numbering. I was pointing out that Sixth Avenue should be. And that it wasn't about the number.
Those are the extent, I think I've covered pretty much all the comments in the planner's report. I think we've gone through the revisions to the plans. Does anybody else have any questions on the application?
Anyone from the board for Mr. Severese and his architectural plans? Mr. Serpico, go right ahead.
I need a clarification. You're testifying that the design, the art deco design was consistent with the master plan. Were you actually meaning to say at that point the waterfront redevelopment plan as opposed to the master plan? Because it's in the report under the WRP, not the master plan. I noticed Warner's facial expression at the time, because he knows the master plan as well as the rest of us. Okay, just want to clarify that.
Donna or Jason, do you have any questions for Mr. Severese?
Well, we didn't go over my letter, so.
You have the original letter.
He had the original letter last night.
He did.
Did you go over that last time? I didn't think you did. Yeah, I thought. We did.
No, I don't think we did review the engineering letter, no.
Getting a decisive no over here.
To be honest with you, I don't recall. We're coming back anyway, next time, let me do that next.
All righty, I'm fine with that.
I do remember we started walking the way, we stopped, and hiring a seven, seven eleven there. At the time, he asked, not to, as yet to be knew, we were possibly, well, forward with this, uh, spending undue money on my client.
We're, we're going to continue to work through the architectural, and then we'll get to the engineering.
I appreciate that, Mr. Karras. Donna, do you have any questions then?
No, I, I.
Okay.
We've addressed our concerns.
Great, I'll open it up to the public for questioning of Mr. Severese. Please come up to the mic, that one's not working, Mr. Baumgartner.
Hello, Mike. Hi, I'm Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue. It's been a while since I've seen this application.
It was quite some time ago, yes.
Quite some time ago, yeah. Do you have a rendering? I haven't seen any renderings put up on any.
I don't believe there was one as part of the application.
No, it's not.
It's just the elevation.
The elevations.
Oh, okay. So that's, the last one is the West Street.
Web.
And this is Sixth. You describe this as an art echo built, and you're claiming it meets the requirements of zone. I'm very curious as to how you arrived with that. What is the zone?
Didn't say it's a zone, but here the zone varies, or as, meets the, of the waterfront.
You mean the design elements of, of the neighborhood, Mr. Baumgartner?
Is this an R one, or R two, or?
This is a two, this is a multi, two-family.
It's a R two?
Yes.
Okay, R two. How do you?
Well, but it's within the renovation infill area of the waterfront redevelopment plan. So the architectural design guidelines and the waterfront redevelopment plan, you know, you kind of have to.
There's an overlay there.
Get them together.
No, there's not. No, there's not. I understand.
Our planner says there is.
I know what the planner is referring to, and we have a discussion about that.
We have had that discussion, yes.
This is not in the waterfront redevelopment area.
True.
It's in the renovation infill area.
That's true, Mr. Baumgartner.
The only thing that governs renovation infill area is base zone. So there's, there's nothing in the waterfront redevelopment plan that governs the renovation infill area.
Is he testifying or?
Agreed. Do you have a question for Mr. Severese?
My question was how the decision was arrived at, that an art deco type building was appropriate in a R two area, which is governed by the community design regulations.
Again, he's testifying.
I'm asking.
He's not asking.
Yeah, I just asked, how that was arrived at.
It was our preference to design the building. They thought that was accurate, it was accurate. They agreed with the town planner, that would be the criteria to work on whether it's for edge of a zone or not, is what was asked to do. Is it a great idea, and it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's, that's, that's the answer. Addressed that later, because I got comments, obviously. The garages that you're talking about are at the bottom elevation of the Sixth Avenue side.
Yes.
Okay. And you're proposing to park vehicles in front of the garage in the front door. Have any examples in that, in that neighborhood of people parking in the front yards?
I've seen this on a sidewalk, driveway, and the cars.
Driveway.
This had a driveway to Bronx, and then another regular one, storage, storage.
Is, is there any evidence on this site of a pre-existing driveway?
Not, not as a.
Are you aware of, what was your prior to the big lot?
I got the Dallas lot three years ago. Brass, so we have some.
It was a vacant lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. Anyone else for the public for questions to Mr. Severese's testimony? Thank you. Mr. Karras.
That's it for tonight. We're certainly going to take the comments that the board has made into account. We're going to come back, I make some revisions to the plans, and then continue with the application.
I appreciate that. Can we figure out a date, Arena, to carry this to?
Okay, so we have January twenty-three.
What's on there right now?
Third position.
Third position.
The possibility that you may not need for.
I think I have number one and two also.
You are.
You are.
You are, you are. And one of those is the charter school, I believe, is not?
Yeah. So it will depend on how long that will stay.
So do you want that third position?
Eventually, we have February eleven.
Why don't we do this? Let's put it on now for the twenty eighth. We'll see how we do.
Okay.
Maybe that will count.
Okay.
Let's put it on there.
All right, so I'll make a motion to carry the three hundred Sixth Avenue application to January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, without further notice.
I'll second.
Mr. Karras, we have the representation. You'll extend the time for us to act. Sorry, I just.
No, no, I appreciate that, Jack, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Karras, thank you, Mr. Siegel. Thank you, Mr. Severese. I'll make a motion to postpone the meeting.
I'll second this one.
All in favor?